Okay, I'd like to convene the January 4th meeting with the municipal county commissioners, and I would like to start with you. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence while we think about starting the new year, with a resolution of thinking, good thoughts, and remembering what St. Francis has taught us about, "It is better to understand than to be understood." Thank you very much. The first item that we must address is something that is required by the municipal county charter. The charter requires that we be organized at the first business day or the first meeting of the new year. The primary part of the reorganization is to select a new chair, a vice chair, and I would like to nominate Pat Flynn to be the chair for the coming year. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will ask for a vote to close the nominations.
I would move to close the nominations.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor voting for Pat Flynn?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is the nomination of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
I would nominate Sheila Lyons for vice chair.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, all those... I'll entertain a vote to close the nominations. Is there a vote to close?
I'll move to close the nominations.
I have a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor voting for Sheila Lyons?
Aye.
I abstain. The next item is the reorganization of the assignments. AmeriCorps is the first one.
Usually I take over. It's okay, though. You can sit down and relax now.
We're just gonna have like a cabal.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You can't give it up.
Good luck.
Yes.
Pass the aura of the chapter.
Yes, well, as like I said, it is truly very much an honor to chair this Board of Regional Commissioners, but it's also a lot of work, and I recognize that as well. So, I hope I can bring and continue the spirit of collaboration and communication among the board, among the administration of the county, and the department heads, and obviously we have a great challenge now with the budget that we will begin today. So, I look forward to taking on this task. So now we will move on to the appointments, and the first, I think, you have your list there.
I do.
The first is the Cape Cod Compact.
Okay, I would... Bobby, to continue on that, they've asked me to continue as chair in hopes that I would be reappointed.
Okay, I will nominate you for the Cape Cod Compact to continue your appointment for another year. Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. AmeriCorps? Oh, and, yes, Ameri...
One voice?
You want to continue, or you...
I think that AmeriCorps benefits from having a rotation.
Can I just, for clarification's sake, these appointments will be as they were previously emphasized, if you look on the last...
Right.
Through January, the first meeting of next Jan...
Of 2014, yeah.
2013.
All the appointments effective for one year.
Yeah.
To 2014. Okay. AmeriCorps?
Although I wouldn't mind, I would continue, I would suggest to you that since there are new people every year, I believe it's something that benefits from having a rotation of county commissioners going through it. I didn't understand why we had an alternate.
I didn't either, but...
I'm sorry.
What I'd like to suggest...
If you have an alternate, it's required by the articles of organization for the group.
Okay, I'd like to suggest that Sheila and I trade places, that she becomes the prime and I become the alternate.
I have no problem with that, that's fine.
I'll nominate those appointments.
I'll second it. Back in this role again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Not opposed? Three in favor. Motion carries. Okay, and then, Dr. Paul, is it planning?
We're in the middle of a whole bunch of stuff I would ask to be reappointed.
Okay. I'll move Bill to be reappointed to the NPO.
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, three in favor, not opposed. Motion carries. Human Services Advisory Council, you want to continue?
I do want to continue on that. We're in the middle of putting out statements on the regional network, and I've been co-chairing that, I feel strongly about it, so I would be happy to do that.
Okay.
On the next one, I'd...
Well, wait a minute, we have to vote.
Okay, aye.
I'm out, I'll have a call.
I nominate Sheila to continue the Human Services Advisory Council.
Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The Workforce Investment Board.
I'd just like to mention that the Workforce Investment Board is something that is the chair, you know, the chair's appointment. In other words, you are designated as the lead official, however you have the ability to delegate. It's my opinion that whenever these appointments are made, that they should continue for at least two years, so that you have, you know, some sense of continuity, so I'd like to suggest that Sheila, if she's willing to continue in that role...
I would like to, because I do think it takes the first year to really sort of understand the board and...
Okay, then I'll nominate Sheila to continue with... Actually, you have to, because it's you, it's a designation.
Okay, I will appoint Sheila Lyons to serve as the Commissioner's representative to the Workforce Investment Board. Thank you. You're welcome. National Seashore Advisory.
It's right there down the street from me, I've been able to attend those meetings, I enjoy it, and I feel strongly about the National Seashore, so I would be happy to continue on that.
And also, we had written a letter in support of Bill Clark to continue as an alternate, and going forward, your appointment, although it comes from us, has a time limit on it, and I would ask that, you advise us as to when that would be coming up, so you have to talk to George Price about that.
Yes.
We have to write a letter to the Department of Interior.
I think he will...
I'm just looking to see if this...
You know, this is being here too.
I know we had to do that last time, because it has to go into like the national...
Yeah, and that's right, it goes before the interior.
I thought we did it for Sheila, too.
Well, we did it for Sheila before.
A year or two years ago or something.
Then, as the appointments run out, that's why Bill Clark's pointing it up, and that's why, you know, we sent, you have to send him a resume and other, and people to testify to your good character in the community and stuff.
Is that something that you could look into?
Yeah, yeah.
And let us know, so that we can get...
And I think that they're very on top of that, too, because they notified you about...
George is usually, he usually lets me know that there's this thing that's missing.
Oh, okay. But, so, the motion, you made the motion to appoint Sheila and I'll second it.
And also, Bill Clark is the alternate.
And Bill Clark. So, are there all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're back to...
Extension and...
Okay, the Extension Advisory Council? That's the Cape Cod Extension Advisory Council.
That's the Cape Cod Extension, and I would be more than willing to continue in that role.
Okay.
I'm playing with that. Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, I'll nominate Sheila, you second it.
I'll make the motion.
You made the motion to appoint Sheila, and Bill Clark is the alternate?
Right.
Yep, I second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. EDC?
Do you want to continue with that?
Absolutely, I would like to continue on the EDC.
Controlling the fortunes of Pasan County.
All right, I'll nominate you to continue.
I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. The Cape Cod Commission?
I would nominate Pat to continue in that, if she's willing to do so.
Two years in the bucket, right?
Yeah, two years in the, that's what they say.
That's right.
You got to do the two years.
It takes two years, yep. It's good.
Okay, a motion and a second, and...
A motion, or backing Sheila, I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Not opposed. Now, I wanted to talk about Children's Code and the Arts Foundation at the same time. Since I can't do the Arts Foundation...
We already said that we would switch.
Do we go to switch? Okay, then I would accept Children's Code.
And I will nominate Pat first, or second for Children's Code.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. And the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, it's Maggie with Mark as the alternate. Is there a nomination for...
I'll nominate Maggie.
She represents the county at the Municipal Health Group.
Yeah, and she does a terrific job, she's the chair of the Wellness Committee.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd recommend her to continue.
Okay, and a second?
I second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I don't see Arts Foundation down here.
No, it's not on there, I have to add it.
You have to add it on the bottom.
Yeah.
So, we'll need a motion to that effect.
Which is, oh...
I will make a motion that we add the Arts Foundation on the list for Commissioner Representative, and I will accept that role if that is what is wished.
Okay, there is a second?
Sure.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Now, there's a couple others on this other sheet of paper here, I think. If we just go down the list, Advisory Council, we did, Workforce Investment Board...
Oh, the Water Protection Collaborative...
Oh, yeah, the collaborative.
And I would like to continue on that. I have been on that from the beginning, and it is, you know, it's one of those things, it's like the EDC, all of you can come and participate, and it's not as though, but it's work that we've been doing, and I am strongly about it.
Sure.
Okay, I nominate Sheila for that, and we will second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Not opposed. And...
See, who else is down here? Let's see, more protection.
No, that was it.
So, can I just go back for a second, just to make sure I have it right? Children's Code, you said you were swapping with Arts, but I had you at, this has you had.
I know, but I don't...
So, you're gonna stay at Children's Code?
It's because we already agreed to do it, and that's why it was on there, we just didn't do the appointment yet.
Yeah, when we said to switch, I was just confused, I'm like, wait a minute, did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's all right?
Sure.
Yep.
Do we have to do anything on the retirement boards or anything like that?
No, that's a four-year appointment.
Okay.
That comes up next.
It's co-terminus.
It's co-terminus with the term as a county commissioner.
Do we have to reappoint the board members of the AmeriCorps Advisory Board?
No, I would not do that yet. They'll, Cara usually keeps tabs on when that has to be done, and she'll let us know.
Okay.
Okay. So, that's done. So now we can take up our Commissioner's Actions.
No, I think, as chair, if I may suggest that we have to have public comment.
You're right, we didn't do that in the beginning, did we? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, then we will move on to the Commissioner's Actions, which are the minutes of the previous meetings.
Do we have the minutes, because I got a note saying that she hadn't completed the minutes, because there was some additions to them.
I didn't see the minutes.
I don't see minutes, I had not seen the minutes.
We will take them up at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then we have our summary of actions, summary of items.
I think, in my opinion, these are pretty much all standard. I do have one question on I.D. twelve.
Yes, I had a question on that one, too. Go ahead, you go ahead.
Ladies first.
No? It's not the ladies first, we're all in this together.
Right, okay. On the IT Services Contract, is that external to, is that a special project?
Ian is doing special projects, yes, he's temporary help that's John using. Remember, last year in the budget, we provided John with, instead of employees, we gave him some professional services money, and that's what he's using Ian for.
Okay, that was the only question that I have.
Okay, and a motion?
With the exception of the minutes, which we put off, do you accept the summary of items?
I will second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Not opposed. A motion unanimous. And, any reports from the county commissioners? If anybody's been doing anything but having fun for the last two weeks?
I know.
I did go to the Patient Family Advisory Committee with Cape Cod Hospital, and that, they're doing a lot of work in trying to, you know, make their facility a lot more user-friendly. And I think that they deserve some recognition indeed for doing that, because one of the concerns that we have is that with so many of our population that are all of a certain age, that they have in many ways a capital audience, they don't really have to do an awful lot. Also, with the change in insurance coverage, one of the things that they've expressed some concern with is that because of the increase in, let's see, in emergency room fees, and the fact that most of the insurance policies are moving to a point where they're not supporting that, the hospital's reporting more problems on collecting the copays because they increase. Now, their hope is that that might modify behavior with regard to accessing emergency room services, that, you know, that might be for things you might get from a primary physician, but at the same time, it is of great concern, this has been a continuing problem ever since we had the mandatory insurance coverage, is that the administrative burdens on health service providers, you know, has been increasing, and that has had that effect. But I think that, you know, the Cape Cod Hospital is the Cape Cod Healthcare, which is the regional provider, you know, has been doing what they can to, you know, support the needs of the community.
So, I know in the Municipal Health Group, do they increase the deductible for ER visits? Do you know of them?
Well, we, remember, what's happening is, we are going, as of July 1st, assuming the process is completed, to all GIC look-alike plans, that's what they're called. So, for the first time, we'll have a deductible, we never had a deductible before.
Oh, this is the first time?
This is the first time we've had a deductible. So, in line with that, the copays are also going up. The copays are going to be higher than they were for the legacy plans. They'll be about the same, or actually go down from the rate saver plans that we offered, but for the legacy plans, which at least eighty percent, if not more, of the employees are on, the copays are going to go up. So, both of those things, premiums will go down for 2013, there'll be some savings to be had there, we're pretty sure. Part of that savings, as you recall, has to be up to twenty-five percent, it has to be set aside to mitigate these cost impacts to some extent, so...
And share with the employees.
We're talking about that, you share with the employees, so we're talking about that as well. We probably do that in the form of a premium holiday, that's probably the most efficient, most effective way to do it, and it hits everybody, everybody who, it's everybody proportionally, what type of plan, both active and retirees. So, that's coming down the pike. We actually had our first meeting with one of the unions here, to try to, you know, keep them up to date on what is happening, and I think that went very well yesterday.
I know there was always a lot of discussion about increasing the copays. They used to, I think, be maybe like, not here, but in some communities...
I think even now, ours are ten.
They were twenty-five dollars, and now they've gone to fifty or seventy-five.
Yeah, they'll be, depending on the service, like, an inpatient hospital, an inpatient, it's a five-hundred-dollar copay, or it's gonna be.
For the hospital.
So, there are, yeah, so...
But sometimes then it negates the ER visit if you're admitted to the hospital.
Correct, that's right. If you have to go through the ER and you're admitted, you only pay one of the copays.
One of the copays, right.
This is a four-thousand-dollar fee hanging out, you know, potential for copay if you're admitted more times, for example.
Well, there's a maximum out-of-pocket, four thousand per family, means two thousand for individual coverage. The deductible is really two-fifty individual, and they call it seven-fifty family, that's a bit of a misnomer, because it's really two-fifty per individual, even if it's a family, so if your family coverage only covers two people, it's really a five-hundred-dollar deductible. But, yeah, this is gonna be new for a lot of people. Basically, what it is, it's shipping costs.
Gotcha. That's exactly what the GIC is.
Yeah, that's what they...
Gotcha. Any place you've been?
I've been to a lot of places, but I don't think anything of any significance here, I'm trying to think back in the last couple of weeks, but, no, I don't think I do at this point.
Okay.
We all went to the Norway Shelter, I wonder if it was...
Yes, I did. You mean the telephone?
Telephone, that was between our last meeting, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
And they did succeed, I think they exceeded their goals, which, you know, which is a good thing.
But just before we start, I just have one thing that I want to hand out to you, and pardon me on how it copied, it looked like the two-sided button, but this is a memo from Bob Troy. As you know, the Attorney General promulgated regulations on the open meeting law, remote participation.
Yes.
So now, should the event occur, people can participate remotely in public meetings.
We have to take a vote then.
There's certain conditions, that's sort of what Bob Troy's memo outlines in the regulations that were promulgated, certain conditions have to occur, certain things have to happen, you have to have a quorum of members of the public body present, physically present at the meeting. So, take a look at that, I don't foresee that as an issue sort of here, although it could be, but it's, what I'll do is I'll promulgate that to all of our department managers, because some of the meetings that we have, for example, the Health and Human Services Advisory Committee, there may be a need at some point for remote participation.
Does a vote taken by the commissioners to allow it?
Yeah, we have to take a vote to allow it.
Yeah.
Under this. I did read this when he sent it to us, and I was glad that they finally, that the AG sought this finally came up with something.
Yeah, it was sort of long awaited, the regulations, so...
So, but then the municipal body, the governing body, the public body, has to...
Has to accept it.
Has to accept it and make its own policies based on this. So, I think that's probably what we should do, and then adopt the policy for the county.
Yeah, and I have to start with those, because I had some comments on their original...
Yes. The county commissioners must, by a simple majority, vote to allow remote participation in accordance with these requirements, with that vote applying to all subsequent meetings of all county public bodies.
Right.
And the other requirement in here says that, in the very end, it says someplace, oh, maybe in the beginning, that, well, for instance, and that should be part of our policy, too, about that if you're going to participate, your participation has to be audible to the people who were there.
Right.
It can't be like on a cell phone. And that there has to be a quorum of the body, including the chair, or I think it says the vice chair. I mean, you have to have either the chair or the vice chair present when you have remote participation. So, we could take a look at these and formulate something specific.
Yeah.
Although I would suggest that we do have, you know, we do set a policy, I believe that by a simple vote now, and with a direction to Mark, to, let's say, to put, let's say, to organize a specific policy, we're starting, it was snowing this morning, we're starting what I would call a bad weather time, and if we take this vote now, then basically, with eventually setting a policy, we're allowing it.
I would recommend, Bill, that we, before you take the vote, that I come back to you with, and they're very, gonna be really simple policies, because basically, the AG, through their regulations, has kind of laid out what you need to do. So, that's what we should do, and let me bring those back to you.
I think that's...
Then you can adopt the policy and vote to, should you choose, accept the remote participation.
And may I ask a question about this? I, do we have to have a particular type of infrastructure here, do we have to have, you know, the...
That phone.
The phone that is much more...
Basically, it's a conference call.
A conference call phone, and that sort of thing, so if, once we do that, we have to make sure that we're able to provide that system.
Yeah.
So, we have to make sure that once we take that vote, all of that is ready to go, and we're not waiting six weeks or whatever, so that that's up. So, I think that by taking, you know, putting this onto even next week's agenda, you can look into how quickly we can have that available if we so need it.
For other purposes, because I don't want to sound like we did remote participation already, but we have conference calls with vendors in this room all the time, and we do it in the Commissioner's office all the time.
Where do you use?
You have a conference call?
There's a, there was a phone somewhere, I don't know where.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's over here.
Oh, it's just that kind of phone?
So, it's, yeah, it's very easy.
It's not like that tri-cornered...
We have one of those, too.
You have one of those? Right, but the other thing, too, it says it has to not only be, it has to be audible to the people, to the public in the audience, not just the people sitting at the table.
So, we have the capability, so...
We do have that.
Yep.
Can you hear us, Dave?
Loud and clear.
Okay, well, so, we'll wait until you come back.
So, yeah, but that's one of the policies, you have, it has to be audible.
Yeah, and then we can just read this, and then look at the policy and...
Yeah.
Okay, let's begin the budget.
George, do you have any extras there? Mark, I forgot.
I do, yeah, actually.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
You ran out with...
Could you pass that down to the chair? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, George.
Good morning.
How are you? Happy to hear.
Well, thank you, happy to meet you. Well, we've had some staff changes this year. Sue Rask, as you may know, has left us to become the county, the officer up in Concord, and we had a relaunch...
Is she living in Concord?
Uh, yeah, she has moved up there.
God, they must be a lot of money. Several of my classmates are up there complaining.
Well, it must have been that to drop away from wonderful Cape Cod.
Yeah.
But we relaunched some staff responsibilities and did not really fill that position, but promoted from within, and the last person, that being who was normally handling the tracking of IAs or innovative alternative systems among the town, now becomes part of our permanent staff, and as I brought to you last year, we had worked in a strategy of sustaining that position, using monies collected under that particular service to run that position. So, in essence, I believe our staff, at least our staff, salary costs have gone down, because Brian Baumgartl, who fills that position, is now going to be supported by the fees collected under that particular account for innovative alternative systems. collected under that particular account for innovative alternative septic systems. In essence, what we've done there is create an annual operating permit. However, the collection of that annual operating permit is through the service providers rather than individuals, because chasing 1,500 accounts down as opposed to chasing a dozen, it's a lot easier to chase than a dozen. So, caring forward, I think most of our requests, our increased requests here, I've offered some explanation in the form of that sort of line item increase and explanation sheet, but I'm open to any questions on that. Our biggest capital requests are in the laboratory. And again, the laboratory is kind of a difficult piece to sort of project, because we have a number of sophisticated instruments down there that you can either put on a service contract, which usually amounts to above anywhere from a tenth to a third of the instrument cost, or you can say, you know, let's take a chance with this and reach for other instrumentation, or develop a strategy in which, if that goes, it doesn't result in such a drop in revenues that we can't just have a service person come in and their schedule repair it. As you know, under service...
You're talking about a risk assessment on the capital equipment?
Yeah.
Do you have experience from what other people have had with similar equipment as far as making that decision?
Well, that's a good question. What I do is sit down with the lab director, Gomen Li. We do an assessment of his capabilities of repairing instruments under the most common scenarios where the instrument fails. We assess how much it costs per time to have somebody come actually service the instrument. We add on to that what we estimate a cost of a replacement part that is most likely to break down. But I would be lying to you if I said this was some sophisticated analysis and a spreadsheet would be available to you under request. It's more like, okay, what's likely to break down? This board costs $1,000, $5,000 per visit for whatever. And we go pretty much instrument by instrument. We're fortunate enough to have a lab director who is a hands-on director, who's had his hands in many of the instruments that he's had to deal with. So a lot of the repairs between he and the operator of our more sophisticated instruments, that being the mass specs, have enough experience to know when to call somebody and when to say, shut it down, I'll take it apart, we'll clean this and it'll be done. So in answer to your question, do we have experience in that only in the past 10 years in which we've been dealing with the instruments? But is there a standard by which we could go to any other laboratory, commercial laboratory, and do this? We've not done that.
I'm going to suggest to you that in another life, we used to take a look at the amortization rate of different types of major appliances and capital equipment, and some, and there's a useful life, and then there's the life that, on which you underwrite so-called, you know, risk insurance policies. You know, for example, refrigerators have a seven-year amortization curve. At the end of seven years, that's the end of the useful life, and you'll notice that all of the insurance contracts are written for like six and a half years, so, you know, how do I cover that? So I believe that in capital equipment, you might be able to talk to other laboratories, you know, just give them a policy, you know, what's been your experience as far as, as far as a piece of, a particular piece of equipment? And of course, when you get a vendor to show up, one of the things that, you know, good vendors should do is give you some references in regard to other people using equipment. I'm sure, you know, you're doing that as, you know, automatically.
Yeah, we have drawn on the experience of Gomen who worked prior in a large-volume commercial laboratory. I think what gets modified in our instance is their analysis, which is strictly economic and says, this instrument goes down, we can't afford, we lose X amount, boom, we go, is modified slightly by two things. One, I'll tell you, our instruments, we use them a lot longer than any commercial lab would use them. And the second part is, which is a little bit more difficult to get a handle on, is the expertise of the people that we have in the laboratory that actually go in and do a repair that a commercial lab would say, no way, just chuck it, get in the way. We're not a high-volume laboratory. Our goal has always been to maintain a posture and ability to monitor groundwater on Cape Cod to the best of our ability without costing so much or competing with other laboratories in those areas where we feel, you know, it's not worth it for us, for instance, to do certain assets. So we don't instrument up for it, because we know there's no way we'd ever catch a commercial laboratory price, just go to the commercial laboratory. We do some of this analysis, but again, it's sitting down over coffee with a scratch pad and saying.
Right.
And perhaps we need a more sophisticated look at it, but I would pose to you that our laboratory isn't high-volume enough to actually perform a real rigid analysis that revealed anything.
That's why you call them manager.
I have a question, George. On this first item, your instrumentation, when you talk about the certification process, now is that for the lab or is that for the tests?
It's actually for the tests. The laboratory maintains wide variety of certifications. This particular one is going to be really touchy, because the methods are always in development and redevelopment. But the UCMR III, which is an analysis going to be required of water companies in 2013, to be poised and ready with that certification for those compounds that I believe are listed down below, the estrogen, you know, they're really hormone compounds, with one exception. To be certified for that, that's going to take an extra certification. But you get certified by parameter set. For instance, metals, trace metals, are you certified for, we're certified for trace metals, nitrate, perchlorate. Some are certified in classes, some are certified for the exact parameter.
And what will be your range of customers for this?
It'll be state and region-wide on that particular analysis, because there are not many laboratories running after this certification. We're running after it for two purposes. One, we believe that some of the work by Silent Spring and others have underscored the need for knowing what else is in the wastewater. I mean, you've heard, and of course, nitrate, nitrogen is key and in everybody's mind. However, we realize that there are other compounds at very trace levels, in fact, the ecology of the systems which propagate into collapses of food chains that we need to be concerned about. We'd like to be ahead of that curve. We're doing some research now at the Alternative Septic System Test Center in this regard. We're using laboratories out at UMass, Amherst, and have tried to collaborate with national experts on this particular issue of onsite systems. And we have assessed that this is a good concurrent project to feed in revenues to laboratory, because I've obtained grants, have obtained grants for two years now, and have others out, we're always fishing for projects that use these type of analyses.
There's a safety issue, you know, that I'm concerned with. You know, we put money into, into an inventory assessment of the amount of herbicides and pesticides that are on shelves. I see that, you know, you're measuring some, you know, the amount of hormone compounds that you have here. I have a personal concern that we're not doing enough to evaluate the amount of hormone-related, let's see, elements that are, you know, that are put into our water supply, you know, through the, you know, through the process of, you know, let's say of wastewater filtration. And I think that, and I hope that the Cape Cod Commissioners Program is in touch with you, or, and if they're not, you know, let us know, because, you know, that's, that's an important piece. If we are measuring how much, how big the problem is, you know, what are we doing in, you know, in terms of, let's say, addressing what they found?
Well, the problem is multifaceted. What you see here, particularly in this request, is very focused. It is, by analogy, would be the nose under the tent, in order to get us into the series of analysis that is going to be required to address a huge problem. But you're talking about pesticides, plasticizers, all the things that are hormone-inducing compounds, that which affects our hormone systems, come after this, but the same instrument is used, along with others. And we're looking to strike some cooperative ventures with Woods Hole Oceanographic, which has some scanning instruments, which I don't anticipate will ever have, or would we ever really want because of the need for them. But, yeah, do we coordinate with what's going on out there with wastewater management, Cape wide? Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
They're looking at that total organic carbon, dissolved organic carbon in wastewater as a surrogate measure of these compounds.
Okay.
Frankly, it's a poor surrogate. It will always be a poor surrogate. You're gonna want to know what the organic carbon is. Could be lignin that comes from leaves and, big deal. Sorry, I'll drink it, do all the time. But we really need to, as you already know, what those compounds are. Our next step in this whole sort of scenario is to try to look for those compounds which induce changes in the hormone. But the first step is, Silent Spring has identified from wastewater hormones getting into our groundwater that has ecological significance. I doubt it has any, because of the therapeutic dose of any hormone in our body has influenced it. The other compounds do, and we'll be chasing those as soon as we get the certification. Again, what our strategy has always been with the laboratory is not to drop the higher burden on the county to do research. So therefore, what do you do? You try to find an instrument that has a market value and a value to the groundwater on Cape Cod, so that others outside the Cape may use our laboratory. That keeps the instrument supported, so that we can do the research.
Right. And anything that's significant, you make sure that other departments, such as the wastewater collaborative, and the commission...
Absolutely.
Know those things, so that we can factor that in when we're looking at whatever ultimate, you know, down the road, they'll be looking at what is going to be the ultimate treatment of the, of the systems.
Sure.
And what will they look like and what will they need, so...
Right. Right now, septic systems, you know, people are saying, wow, you know, if we could use septic systems, what are some of the other implications?
Right.
So the research projects we're doing at the test center are their modifications to standard systems that don't cost much money, that could remove the most, most of these as we could. And there are, we're clearly finding that, and we're clearly finding some things that, when published, will be quite startling. People will say, wow, we could have had a V8. We can have a V8. And they'll be, we'll be introducing this information, talking to DEP about it, and say, look, what's allowable in your regulations? How can we incorporate this into our standard practices down here to reduce the amount of, we can eliminate, but to reduce...
I'm still driven by an article that was written by a physician from Yama last year that was in the Cape Cod Times about how there is what I call an under, under-measurement of, you know, outcomes with regard to hormonal development, you know, within the water supply. And being in the school system, you see, you know, you see issues with regard to development, you know, with the young girls and women, that, you know, that are clearly affected by, you know, by hormonal, hormonal changes. But in any case, the, I'm glad, you know, to hear that you're communicating with the, you know, with the other departments, but I'm more concerned that the other communicates are reciprocating and communicating with you about, you know, about what progress they're making. And one of the things that I've been concerned with as a, as a county commissioner, is to make sure that there is a continual collaboration and communication among all of our elements, so that, so that something isn't going on across the street, that you don't know about here, and vice versa. I know you do every, you make every effort to do that. I want to make sure that we have confidence that, you know, that you're getting a high degree of reciprocity with the guy to that.
Well, let me set the level of expectation correctly. Cape Cod Commission, in dealing with wastewater issues on the Cape, look at the large management issues, which certainly they need every piece of small information that affects their decisions fed to them. And nothing we do is in a closet. We publish it, or we talk about it, or we present. We just presented something, the Extension Service held a nice thing on unused pharmaceuticals or unwanted pharmaceuticals. Presented all of that, it was, actually appeared on the web, and it was nice, thank you very much, did a great job. And that information is out there and ready for anybody to accept and use and incorporate. And a lot of towns participate in that, so they understand. So I mean, their individual wastewater managers know this. So it's not that there needs to be daily communication between folks dealing with that larger issue and the folks doing some research and dealing with onsite systems, as we are. But I believe the degree of communication is adequate.
Thank you. And, you know, other things, we have a couple of other questions, you know, we got to stuff in here.
Yeah, well, we'll move on.
Thank you.
So we'll let George take us through.
Yes.
Oh, well, the, the major things are the laboratory. The one, of course, increases our capability of, there's a limiting step within the analysis, which is the sample preparation, solid phase extraction. We believe we need to sort of smooth that limiting step, so that the instrument can be used to its capacity. That was the one piece of it. The other laboratory capital expenditure is a new ion chromatograph. The one we use presently is not serviced anymore by the company, and that's a pretty, a pretty traditional way they do it. They just keep going and then they say, well, we're not going to service this old one anymore, so you need to buy a new one. It's, it's in good shape, it's presently functioning. However, we can't do without it. It is the bread and butter down there, it's the nitrate analysis. If this is not approved, what we would do is shift another ion chromatograph that we use for perchlorate into this slot. However, that leaves us without the perchlorate analysis. Is that a big deal? Well, that perchlorate analysis for the laboratory not only serves the Cape, but is one of our major revenue generators.
Sure.
So we'd like to replace the one that is not being serviced, put it into the nitrate analysis. It's got some enhancements that will make things more efficient, but not much more than the instrument that's there. But in short, I didn't believe, and that's why you see a request before you, that we could afford to drop that instrument.
Is it, now, this is destructive and non-destructive and non-intrusive testing?
By destructive, do you mean, does the sample go through once and then it cannot be used for another analyte? By that, I would say yes, because an ion chromatograph, I mean, you're not retrieving on the other side of that. There are certain instruments that we use for nitrogen, total nitrogen, that do two in the analytes at once, total organic carbon. We actually, using test center funds, because that's what the test center primary focuses on, TN, got an instrument that does two at the same time. Most of our samples, it would be destructive.
Okay, and the reason I bring that up is that justification for having a more accurate and reliable instrument is that if you're only looking at the sample one time...
Once.
It's important that you have, you know, you have confidence in the, let's say, in the reliability of, you know, of this piece of equipment.
Well, as you know, and as our protocols I'll call for, a standard curve is done daily, and every 10 samples, a standard is injected into the instrument and run, just to make sure it still hasn't drifted. If it's drifted a certain amount, we maintain enough sample left that is non-destructive, that we could re-inject into the instrument, should that 10th sample, which we ran the curve on, said the instrument drifted, sorry, go back to square one, recalibrate, rerun these. So we never throw the samples away, we, let me take that back. We do not throw the samples away before we're sure we have gotten a good sample.
What would be the range of revenues from an equipment like this?
Well, the, this piece of equipment is somewhere, the perchlorate analysis is about $90,000 a year. The nitrate analysis, it goes widely, all over the board, and I don't have that as to recommend.
Can I have a good question? I mean, and this might be offbeat a little bit, but last year, MBL, you know, joined the course with everyone else, saying that they were going to do, use their cottages, their summer cottages for their summer interns and summer fellows, to try out different septic systems. Am I right in that understanding? They were going to be looking at alternative septic systems that might be more efficient than the Title V's that we know?
Correct.
And I imagine that they would have to turn to you, because you have a lot of different, you know, people and systems in place. Have, has there been any collaboration in that effort in...
That's a very good question. Recently, they held a meeting at Woods Hole with the Commissioner, DEP, to explain what that whole collaborative was. It is basically a water center that they want to establish...
Right.
...for research and development of certain things, among them sensor technology. And we were, I was involved in the meeting, but I have to tell you, when asked directly by the Commissioner, what part we played in it, it has still not been clear to me what role we would play in that particular thing. The test center operates somewhat autonomous, in that it supports itself. And its main function is to determine technologies appropriate for use on Cape Cod and elsewhere, but primarily focused on the nitrogen issue, and assist companies in getting to market with products at work, and sending those dogs home that don't hunt. So essentially, that's what we do. How that fits in the whole scheme of their water center, I'm still a little fuzzy on. But should they ask any assistance on what we have already known, which is really published and available on the web through NSF, through, what is it, Bay Project, through our own website, certainly, and we don't own any of it, share it. What I think their, their main problem is, is that there may not be a clear vision for how they would, it has to sustain itself. You have to have something that a company would come to you and say, what am I getting? I'm gonna get out of here. If you can't give them that, they don't come, because it just costs them money. So our model has always been, sit down with the regulators, figure out what they can get when they go, ask them if they've talked to the other 49 regulators out there, state regulators, and say, is this worth it for you? And if it isn't, we tell them, don't come, unless you just want to do research here. So, and that model is what we hold tight to. How that fits in with the other, I don't know, but...
Yeah, but I think it's...
We're willing and open and discussing all sorts of things with them.
Because I think you'd be helpful, you know, your work would be helpful to them, and their results are going to be helpful ultimately to all of us.
Absolutely, and they're, they're trying to focus a little bit on water diversion technologies, which compost and toilet, share diversion, recovery of nutrients from those aspects. And those are things that the test center is not particularly set up to do on its site, but certainly is... but certainly is set up to set up monitoring plans for. But I would not presume to know more than the brains at Woods Hole and Marine Biological Laboratory to be a setup of central plant. I'm sure they know how they do that.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that too, but I still think that there's valuable information to be shared. So I think that that would be, you know, good lines to keep open and see where collaborations.
Our interface with regulators state and nationwide is good in that regard because we understand what data they want to see, what they believe, what they don't believe. Whether they accept them as third party or not, we're always questioning that.
And also, you have, we have EPA up on the hill, they are there, they are having temporary residence.
DEP, yes.
I mean, DEP, excuse me. So, you know, there's always
It's been very good. I'll tell you.
Oh, I bet you that's great synergy, yes, which I think is the whole benefit of that.
So that's the laboratory.
Let me just ask you a question. So with the MBL, would they do their own testing or would they do testing through the lab?
They may test some things through a laboratory. They have, of course, some phenomenal capability down there. However, laboratories at research institutions like that typically don't get certified by the state for their analysis because they're always changing the methods and working it to get the better result. And many times, they're better than the certified method, sometimes they're less. So if the state was to accept results from there, they have within their regulations that it be done, analysis be done in a state certified laboratory. So they may come to us for some analysis. And indeed, in these hormone compounds, if it ever gets to that, we'll have a certification for it. They certainly have the instrumentation down there. They have a ton of light, mass pack, they have all sorts of things down there. But I don't think they go through a certification process because for research, they don't either.
Now, they have, they have a new book or a new, a new building down at the Lissy campus, don't they? That's just related to water, but is it underwater research or just any kind of water?
They, of course, deal with a lot of marine situations. And my limited discussions with some of the scientists down there, because we're always looking for ways to sort of expand our capabilities in cooperation, is that they have some specific research objectives. And what I tried to do is identify the specific research objective and say, you know, the dance card for that instrument might not be totally full. We could fill it, and as I've done out to you, Mass, I've said, Dr. Radkow, we'll collect the sample. We'll do everything. You publish it. We want it. We didn't want to see it out there. So those are the kind of relationships we start, because I don't publish things, I don't, I don't need to publish a parish, I hope, if you tell me someday I do, I will. However, research institutions typically have that publisher parish mentality.
Well, you know, with the Smarter, if I can just, you know, with the Smarter Cape Initiative and with, you know, there is, I think that we're looking at the county being able to have that type of clearinghouse of information. So I think that that's a very good place for all of, you know, that to be housed. So we can have that, everybody's doing different things, where can we collect it all and actually come up with an answer on that? So ultimately, hopefully, we'll have that type of system in place in the next couple of years if we have increased broadband and technologies.
I'm hopeful.
Same here.
So that's the laboratory piece of it. The laboratory also asks for an increase in supplies, which I believe is fairly modest considering the standards for the new instrument. Professional technical services and emergency planning. I sat down at length with Sean O'Brien on this, and one of the things that they've identified over the past couple of years now is the need during an emergency to have a point person for talking to the press. All of the information goes to, we've been fortunate in the services of Kevin Morley, who's served in the past in that. It takes the burden off of Sean O'Brien, who is out there really trying to pull all of the meetings together and make sure that everybody's talking to one another, making sure the multi-agency coordination center is set up. All of those things that the incident command structure calls for. One of the most important ones is this point person for the press, to get to that person so that everybody isn't feeding the different messages in. They all go through that point. So we consider that vital, and that's why we've requested $10,000 on an as-needed basis. It's not going to be on staff other than during an emergency. They are, a person, a set of people are mobilized for that particular function. And I think that's fairly reasonable. Watching what happened during the rain, it was fairly evident that there was a lot of activity that Sean had to orchestrate that to stop and talk to the press just wouldn't have got the job done.
Right. I've been through three of these ICS trainings, you know, and at each level, they emphasize the fact about making sure that the operational people are kept away from the press and that there be a designated spokesperson so that the people can do the job that they're, I think this is essential, you know, in order to go forward.
It's one of those pieces that when you've got all your workers in the field, it is a lot of work for this point person to go and make sure he or she has the most recent information so that the press is fed accurate information in a timely fashion. If they have to try to get an incident commander within a town who's running around trying to make sure that all of his shoulder structures are working correctly, logistics, all of the four main branches, then it's difficult for them to operate. So we think it worked well. It's something we want to support and let's do that there.
So this would be someone who would communicate on a county-wide basis?
Yes, they do. They're in touch with the MAC or the Multi-Agency Coordination Center, which is for now set up in the sheriff, down by the sheriff. That contains folks from N-Star, Red Cross, all of your, the people in Multi-Agency Coordinating Center are ones that can make some decisions and relay information, make sure resources get to where they need it. Sean is typically fairly active in that also being there. So, yeah, this person would be in touch with the pulse of what's going on in the county through that, through the MAC.
That's sort of my question, George. So you have this person who's only around when you need them in an emergency. How do they know, so how does this person keep aware of all of these pieces that are sort of moving along the chessboard here? And especially in an emergency, it's a fairly frantic move at that point.
That's right. That's a good question. What happens is when the emergency is imminent and there are a lot of meetings called between the fire police chiefs, and those are telephone conference calls, that person is right there at that time, taking notes feverishly and then discussing with all of those folks, what is it that we have, where should, you know, so he or she is taking the notes so that, they're right there. They know what's going on. They know how assets are going, at least planned to be put out there. Then that person is always in touch with the MAC, the Multi-Agency Coordinating Center, as far as what is presently going on, that those are the updates. So they're called in as soon as the first executive committee meetings are called from the RAPC. And then when the broader phone calls are made to all the membership of the RAPC, they are right there also taking those. So they're involved right from the beginning as far as where everything's going, how and when, things like that.
This might be a question more for Sean than for you, but I know that on the committee, there is a, you know, let's say a public information liaison that usually comes from one of the radios or one of the newspapers. Would that be the person that would be looked at as being a potential to fill this hole?
No, not really, because they have a unique role in that. Their participation in the RAPC is mainly for understanding how messaging gets out and giving the RAPC an understanding of what the needs of the press might be or the needs of the newspaper might be, and how they position themselves prior to an emergency, who their contact people might be that call them. So it certainly is not out of whack that it could be the same person, but the two roles are particularly different. And the person you want for, to relate to the public, you want to have somebody more intimately knowledgeable of some of the disciplines that are being maneuvered during an emergency than somebody who's just a member of the RAPC liaison.
And you would also want somebody that not only is familiar with the operations, but also familiar with the operations of the press, like what is the information, you know, succinctly that they need at the time to get that out? So you would have to have some sort of
It's quite a role.
A little bit of journalistic background or news information background as well as being able to take in and
Form a press release.
And understand.
Four months going out.
Right.
Get it to all the players that are referenced in that to make sure that the information's current and then get it out. Because people want to know, for instance, you know, what shelters are open, where can I take dogs, all these things. So that person has to be able to say, okay, here are the series of questions that I need to get out to the press. And they have to know all the people they need to call to make sure that information's going to be accurate, when the shelter's open, when the dogs can come in, who's going to take dogs or pets, who isn't, things like that.
There's a bunch of infirmities, so-called public relations firms on the Cape. That sounds like a role for some of them.
Yeah, or a person.
Or a person.
Who is in a structure and, you know, we can identify who some of the candidates are and call from a list because you don't want to have to be one person because it could be off in ten months, two.
It wouldn't be far enough, not for $10,000.
Well, I think, I think having inventory of public relations firms that do this sort of thing, because they would have that structure in there rather than an individual, might be a better, might be a better choice.
We will rely on the RAPC to set the structure of that because, again, this, the RAPC is staffed by us, however, it is run by the towns. So its actual function, most of those critical functions are determined by the towns. And if the police chief, fire chief, so I'll get to, and all the membership say, you know, we think this would be a good candidate, then we'll bring that before you or if we have the latitude.
It has to be somebody available when the emergency occurs, can drop what they're doing, participate, go back to whatever else they do.
Or could be one of several that are on call.
And it may indeed be a member of the RAPC who is familiar with all the things that are necessary in order to perform that function. Primary in that training would be that they have PIO, Public Information Officer, trained because there are certain things that are said and there's certain things that are not said.
Otherwise, you end up with Three Mile Island, you have the engineer that runs a place telling you to press the button.
You could, and that's the whole purpose of incident command. So that's why we've placed that in there and asked for the continuance of the support that you gave last year for the centers. The other requests are, I think, George, that would be my opinion, or you wouldn't see it in front of you, the fairly modest increase in supplies, materials. One thing I'd like to mention that this year, given what we heard about health insurances, given what we've heard, some national studies that are put out, we believe that the department really has to help local boards of health increase visibility in the public health nursing area for prevention. Screenings, early detection, down to the exercise, but primarily the screenings and early detection and encouragement to people to take care of themselves and give them the tools to do that. We're viewing some national studies that were sort of commissioned by Congress to find out where the best cost-effective thing is. And to tell you the truth, I mean, I'm your county health officer, but I think of these things in different terms. I think of what's important to you, what's important to the towns, is certainly quality of life, but it's also financial, there are financial constraints. So we are viewing those documents, studies documented through this congressional study to say, where is your best bank for your buck, not only in preventable things, but ones that have the highest return in quality of life as well as economics. And there was a very nicely published study recently that listed in order of priority those target things that we should do along with the ten essential functions that CDC claims and boards of health should have to do. And we're melding those into a series of proposals that we're floating like confetti to anybody who will listen, under, for instance, the community incentive grant program, some through CDC, in order to increase and bolster up the public health infrastructure for screenings and early intervention and keeping people out of those situations, medical situations. So increased number of screenings for cholesterol, high blood pressure, you know, looking at bladder cancer, for instance, in targeted groups like firefighters. So this year, we have, I've asked for a modest increase in supplies here, but we will be increasing our efforts to obtain grants in those areas, particularly because it makes sense, it makes quality of life better, but it makes economic sense. And those numbers are coming more and more as people are really crunching and looking at, where's your best bank for your buck here? Some of the, some of the top 10 or two of the top 10 were somewhat surprising to me, but we will start to engage in some grant opportunities to, again, assist boards of health to increase that visibility and public health nursing structure in their town through regional sharing, sharing resources somewhat.
If, on regional sharing, one of the, one of the things we continue to look at is we have, and we've just gone through, I think we've seen like 12 of the 15 towns and talked and talked to them about the things that we're already doing on a regional sharing basis. The boards of health based upon resources, I've always felt that if we consolidated portions of what I'd call the high overhead pieces of boards of health's responsibility, that we could, you know, we could perhaps shift the, let's say, shift the resources that the towns have to invest in a duplicative basis and concentrate that, you know, under us. And I was wondering if there's been any move or any interest expressed by town boards, you know, to take a look at not transferring all of the responsibilities for, you know, for managing and monitoring, you know, health issues, you know, on a regional basis, but what portions of their individual responsibilities would they see would be, would benefit from, let's say, consolidation? Do they have priorities?
Very deep in there is a softball for you.
Yeah, yeah, but most of it's horrible because as the Department of Public Health had a recent initiative for regionalization, that caused a knee-jerk reaction among many boards of health, not so much down here, because we are a regional health department, but we are definitely a different model than the state had envisioned. The state had envisioned two, three, four towns getting together, make a common health department, have a common board, do some collaboration and cooperation there and get some cost savings out of it. As you may sort of know, on Cape Cod, we're different in that we're the only regional health department, but even the health departments are slightly different. The health departments on Cape Cod developed in a, in a setting where Title V was sort of the main focal point of 90% of what they do at the board of health meetings is Title V. Title V, as you may know, or may even believe or not, it was a point of local control on growth. So that particular, that paradigm, that's embedded here. So when you talk to a local board of health about regionalization, you will most likely get a knee-jerk reaction because of the word "regionalization" and their, their thoughts of what that really means to their authority, power, local control. So what does that leave a regional, whatever, county health department to do? We look at those opportunities where we say, okay, we don't want any control, never did want control, we want to help. So we are a cafeteria style of regional service. 15, 14 towns use us for this service, monitoring the beaches, 14 uses for that, 14 used to use us for region RAPC, but now there's 15 towns. A town wants a service, we provide it. And we show the towns through town services and what those savings are, a laboratory. What town can afford, maybe perhaps Chatham House is the only laboratory that has certification. What town can afford, maybe perhaps Chatham House is the only laboratory that has certifications on the Cape. But most towns don't. They don't want one. There's a lot of overhead there and it's best to be used as a shared resource. We're looking now, as I said, our, our new, sort of not initiative, but our, our encouragement to carry on in a direction we're headed is this whole health issue and prevention issue. We've closely looked at what boards of health have to do as far as fulfilling those 10 top essential functions. We've looked at their emergency planning functions, which none of them really wanted to do on their own because there was less guidance. So we walked into that and said, look, we'll hire the contractors, get your emergency plans together. They'll all look alike so they can walk across town borders. We'll establish mutual aid contracts among you. Now, what does that sound like? If, if somebody said, without even thinking about what the state's doing, somebody might look at that and say, huh, that sounds like regionalization. Well, it is. It's taking those functions that are not worth or having somebody full-time in the town to do and allowing the county to inject their particular part of effort into, and do it. That to me is they accept the service because they want the service. And whether they call it regionalization or not, it certainly looks like a duck to me.
It's, it's, it's the right economy of scale for them to join on that. And that's where, what you're doing is the right economy of scale on those types of efforts.
So now we have recently, in fact, today, we'll be mailing to them a proposal which says, look, we believe that there's only two towns right now, we know there are only two towns that have public health nurses on staff, or on school sandwich. All the other towns have contracted services for particular things like running clinics and whatever. But the outreach, this piece, which I believe has huge economic and style of life, quality of life issues, is not generally being addressed. Well, we're county health department, what should we be doing? Addressing it. So that's what we're going to do. And we're going to do that without, hopefully, coming to you for any more resources other than the modest increase in some supplies because we need to test for people. And we're going to look elsewhere because everybody's starting to recognize what I heard today, which is the economics are driving something and they're driving something big. And we need to get a handle on it. Well, if you believe the studies, the handle on it is prevention. You need to beef it up. And boards of health who have back to square one, where they've been primarily focused on Title V and some things, emergency planning, have not had that ability to do. We're hoping to be able to say, look, we can do this and we'll try to make it most cost-efficient for you to do it. And we'll always respond to your question of whether it's economically viable or not. And we'll get grants if we can get it. We'll do those things, but that's always been our role. It's always been our role.
In, in thinking of, you know, getting the word out in prevention and doing that education piece and helping people become more aware and testing and that sort of thing. And there is more of a concentration on community health centers. Do you have interaction with the community health centers as well as the municipalities?
Well, we certainly will in this particular, because this is the outreach effort. That's where people congregate for those types of services. The other big piece we're looking at, and only because we've, I've enjoyed a synchrony of having people walk into our staff situations with expertise that they say, oh my God, yeah, I need that, is the social media piece of it. It's, it's reasonably inexpensive to touch people with messages in all sorts of ways, which they are now going to the web for their information.
To do reminders.
Right. So together, to try to establish, with the health agents, by the way, what are the creative ways you want us to reach your people for you? I mean, my goal would be to increase the visibility of every local board of health so that everybody in the town knows, one, there is one, two, they care, three, they're on a job, four, they're good at what they do. And if that then reflects in some way back to the efforts that you have supported throughout our department, then I say, fine, that's great. If they know there's a county health department that is there to support, is good at what they do, is there with targeted services when they need it, then that's our mission. That's what we're supposed to do. And I don't think particularly combining boards of health, the form a board within a town, is particularly productive, is particularly the way to go because there's always this underlying, will I lose control? And the point of health, when we talk, is the most powerful board in town. Regulation, no hearing, fine, except Title V.
And no requirements for serving on the board of health other than wanting to-
You could be walking too slow through town hall and somebody picked you up. I mean, that's, that's how it could be. So our mission really is to encourage them. Of course, to have good experts on their board faculties, some wonderful people on their board.
Yes, I, and you have a unique position of being able to make a judgment with regard to your personal experience at the town level and at the county level.
I will tell you that when I go to boards of health, which I have to, evening meetings and things, to say that I am a fellow board health member goes a long way.
When you talk about the powers, the first time I read the statute on the powers of the boards of health, I thought, wow, you could shut down any business in town. There's all kinds of things.
So we don't want to ever go at that third rail nerve root, exposed route. But why would you have to?
No, I think that it makes sense. And this is where it really does, those shared, those shared resources make a lot of sense.
I mean, they are under their control. We do the coalition of health agents, we staff it. We don't run it. We don't tell them what to do. We make recommendations because we see a big picture. But that is a perfect model, I believe, in the county government. Yeah, does it have, have its whatever? Sure, you could get five cats running a different direction. What do you do then? You live with it and you work through it.
I have one last question. Who's doing ICS training these days?
Sean does some.
Sean does some?
There's also the Fire Training Academy.
I want to say for anybody listening, that's Incident Command System training.
The Fire Training Academy runs numerous courses, of course, and Sean will be out there. But I would say your primary resource at the county is the Fire Training Academy. And ICS training, of course, now because they want everybody, the lower levels are available online. But it's good to have a face to talk to while you're going even through the lower levels.
And, and the different levels?
Yeah, one, two, three, four, NIMs 700. Most of us in the department have gone through three and four, so I'm training it, but I'm not conversing in it, so I can run a machine but not operate it kind of thing. So I, to be familiar with it as all, at my level, I need to be because Sean is pretty much the expert in that. And when an emergency happens that that way and I say, Sean can go down to the mag and do something at a lower level, he's absolutely at that.
I'm going to reinforce what you said for the boards of selectmen to say that, that officials at all levels should at least have gone through the first stage of ICS training.
First two, one and two, absolutely. And certainly know, the biggest thing, as we talked about, is the PIO, Public Information Officer. During an emergency, the thing that can derail a set of strategies the most is somebody shooting off the wrong information. Because you spend more time putting that back into the box than you would in releasing it the right way.
Anything on Medical Reserve Corps, the flu shots? Not too much in the news these days.
Yeah, well, we're facing a particular challenge with, and we've been drafted up, written a letter to the Commissioner of Public Health on the whole flu shot piece of it. The Medical Reserve Corps is, it's one of the best in the state and we're doing-
One of the best, I think it is.
It is the best.
Right.
But one of the things, the challenges we are facing is that because of the way the state rolls out vaccines and the supply they give to the towns versus the supply they give or the supply available to some of the large marketers, I mean, let's face it, this year, you could, five gallons of gas, you could get yourself a shot. What that's done is reduced the amount of people who are participating in local, locally board of health running clinics. You say, well, that's good. That would be terrific if that chain of distribution would be anticipated for a traumatic event. If everybody, the way it is now, could get the vaccines or the prophylaxis the way they're getting, that would be great. But that's not the way it's going to happen. State tells us that in major prophylaxis, the town will get them and distribute it to the population. So big deal? Well, the lower participation in clinics means that we have not been able to exercise last year and the year before a full extent of our emergency plan. So we've been struggling to try to figure out, how can we make sure we'll be prepared for the big load that might come when we have not been able to do that year to year? So I've written to the, the Commissioner of Public Health with this problem and saying, I believe the solution, of course, I'm not a public health expert, but I believe the solution is give more to the boards of health as far as a vaccine and give it to them very early.
Right.
Because if they get it late, they're going to run a clinic and you're going to hear the crickets. That's all you're going to hear. Because they've already gotten it at a number of other outlets they could get it at, which is good. But again, unless that's going to be the mode of distribution in a huge emergency, then we're going to have difficulties running our clinics because we will not have exercised more recently those aspects of the clinic needed to handle large crowds. So that's what's happening. The MRC is, you know, funded through the coalition. As you recall, we don't pay for the MRC. We fund that out of coalition funds, which is a CDC grant, which we obtain each year from CDC and a minister on behalf of the towns. There are, there are 23 member towns because it includes both islands. Particularly, we don't even have a vote on that. Our department has no vote on it. We are totally supportive in that regard. We're on the financial piece of it and go through the auditing piece of it. And we basically take all of the resources that CDC gets us and figure out with the agents where they want that distributed. In the past years, they've hired or maintained on staff, on call, four public health nurses that are writing and updating their emergency plans, local plans. The salary of the person who's in the MRC, and we also obtain a grant from NACO and others to support National Association of County Health Organizations. We obtain a grant from them as well as there's targeted money within the CDC grant for MRCs. And that cobbled together is the salary and benefits for the person that we maintain in the MRC. So they, they are not shunning a budget that's been coming out of the-
Repeat what the MRC is for people.
Medical Reserve Corps. Medical Reserve Corps is a congregant individual who's ready to respond in an emergency. They're anywhere from medical to practical to, you know, traffic issues or shuttling people through. And they also staff the regional shelters, of which there are, I believe, six still on Cape Cod during an emergency that can happen.
The, the young lady that, you know, that runs it, you know, is highly motivated.
Jean Oma.
Jean, and when Jean, when I interviewed Jean, one of the questions that I had for her is how can people become part of the Medical Reserve Corps? And I think that, you know, that that might be something you might tell people over watching now.
Well, they simply contact Jean Oma at the County Health Department. I'm not aware what her extension is, but if they dial 375-6614, they should be able to get it. And we're now presently looking at melding a list of MRC with the state sort of compiled list where we're asking the health agents whether they want us to join sort of that state piece of it, which will allow people from other parts of the state to respond to the Cape without going through an extensive process of screening, as they already have been prescreened. And similarly, us to be able to help other parts of the state.
Do they all have to be cored?
It's a state register and yes, they do all the queries themselves. We have in the past been doing our own queries for the MRC. We'll maintain our list and we're in close cooperation with the MRC out in the island. Months have been here. We're about to start a new Medical Reserve Corps and then tuck it through this effort too because it's supported through grants.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the health lab relocation?
How's it going?
We'll hear more about it, about John, but-
And I should probably hang around for that just to keep the update.
I'm going to try to get him early because I think we'll be a little bit early.
But yeah, they're, you know, proceeding a little bit behind schedule and, in fact, a lot behind schedule. But definitely progressing. The next piece to go up there will be the shell, which we're working through some of the bids for the shell now. Once that's on and enclosed, what's left really is the internal structure and plumbing and the electrical. And I anticipate that it'll be closed in by spring. May have to delay some of the requests for funds into the next year's budget, funds to complete it. And then it's looking probably like about a year and a half we'll be in there. But we're thinking about how to sequence moving up there. And I'll be meeting with Goman continually on this to see what we can move up there which will not interrupt, of course, service or the revenues from down there and what will be our best bank for our buck to move up there. What individual units can be moved up which won't affect the performance of the rest of those in the laboratory. Since you understand a sample comes in, it usually goes through a train in there.
Right.
Some of them go directly to X instrument and those would be the ones we'd say, okay, yeah, you should move those up. But we haven't got quite the plan for that yet, but we're working on it.
And what is the whole, what is lagging that effort?
Well, John's, John, Blaze Allen, myself and George met yesterday. And money's part of the issue. We got some decent bids, but we had about a million dollars to spend and John's used up that for the shell. So basically, he estimated yesterday that we're about 600,000 more that we'll need to do the interior, which I think we're going to put in, and it's not in here. It's either in your budget or it'll be in John's budget. We'll put, have to build that in.
Internal logistics.
I'm a little surprised when you mentioned a year and a half. I was thinking more this calendar year we should be-
Well, April, May would be the shell completed.
Yeah.
Can't do anything on the internal part until, of course, after the, so July. So now we're into July, August, September, October to the internal. I'm thinking four months easily for the internal. And then what you can do and move in the winter is a little bit different than what you could do in clement weather. So depending on that and depending on what we can develop for a strategy, I was talking a full lab operation.
Yeah, okay.
I have some other questions on some of these goals, the tests.
Yeah, sure.
And on the monitoring of beaches, one of the things-
What page?
This is on the first page of the goals. There's not a number, but it's the first page of mine with regard to maintaining surveillance of bacterial, bacterial quality. We do a lot with the dredge and the dredge takes spoils and puts them on the beach. The question that, that I have, I asked you a couple of years ago, there was a concern that was expressed in the town Dennis because the spoils were thrown in the beach before July 4th and they stunk. So the question is, is there any material effect that people have to fear from the spoils being used for beach nourishment with regard to, let's say, causing a deterioration in the, in the, let's say, in the quality of, you know, of the beach itself in terms of a health hazard?
Okay. In terms of a health hazard, most likely not because what we, what controls beaches primarily bacterial. There's some visibility issues, but it's primarily bacterial. When you dig up spoils that have been buried, you'll have a transient odor that will recur simply because the sulfides build up. As soon as, well, oxygenated water gets on top of those sulfides and oxidize them, I mean, you'll smell them for a while, but that will dissipate. And everything that looks black will start to resume that sort of tan color, tan to red color on Cape Cod because of a lot of iron in our soils or in our sands here. It builds far an iron. So my answer to your question will be, I don't believe so. However, there could be local circumstances where somebody could dredge up in an area that had excessive organic material and dumped it there and that might assist the bacteria that we monitor to survive a little bit longer. But I suspect that the effect would be transient, depending, the transient period, depending on how well flushed that area would be.
The main question is on, in your experience of, you know, of-
There's been no problem, my experience.
The, on the next page, we have the domestic programs.
Yes.
Okay. How long is that money going to last? It keeps coming up, it keeps going down and the, and the concern that I have is that, is it doing any good?
Well, is it doing any good is a separate question for how long the funding will last. I believe the funding will last as long as people continue to smoke because it's a dedicated fund, which is in part, or I should say, it's funded from part of the settlement, the tobacco suit, as well as what's being sold. So does it do any good? Well, it's definitely reduced the access, youth access, because that's where they have focused on their efforts in the past year because of the funds not being available for some of the other preventative things, frankly, shame on them. They've focused us on youth access issues, which means going and making sure stores aren't selling, they're well-posted, they're stung when they do so because some of the communities have pretty, all the regulations call for pretty good fines for stinging them for doing that. So it's reduced the youth access. As far as its overall effect, I wish it was a more well-fleshed-out program where there would be some opportunities for getting folks off or presently addicted to cigarettes, but it isn't. And actually, the first question, I believe it'll last forever because people always smoke and the settlement money is there. We don't get the portion that I believe that is due. And the second part, whether it does good, yes, I believe it does because we've reduced the number of people who are selling to youth, and the sting operations are increasingly finding that people aren't selling to youth.
On the second item on the same page.
Pardon me?
With regard to public safety.
Excuse me, Bill. Could I have 30 seconds for a quick change?
Yep. On the second item, on communicable diseases, I don't know if Lyme is considered to be a communicable disease other than, we have a lot of folks that work, that are outside quite a bit. And there would be a related question later on in another section of your goals with regard to it, but the difference of opinion with regard to doctors' opinions on the Cape with regard to the diagnosis of Lyme disease, and as well as the business of rabies and pre-exposure, especially since there's been visibility for, let's say, for a person sanit, I guess, unfortunately, that was bitten by a bat. Although I would suspect that humans would not be, would have very little exposure to bats, there are a lot of animals that would. And I'm wondering if, in terms of your planning, in terms of protection, what are we doing to prevent rabies and Lyme disease prevention with regard to our own employees?
Okay. I'll go first. Lyme is not communicable, from one person to the other. We have, as you know, and you've assigned or at least noted, who will be on the Lyme Disease Task Force with the islands or parts of County Lyme Disease Task Force. We're meeting actually this afternoon, a couple of us, to determine where our program should go as far as with what funds and how we obtain funds for certain aspects of outreach and education. So you address that through your Lyme Disease Task Force. The support for that is Bill Shop and my own, which is County Extension and our own. Our public health nurse gets out to the at-risk, primarily the kids. There's a lot with the children in school and developing those creative ways to take home the message. Bill Shop does a lot with how to landscape and properly landscape your home to avoid ticks. So there's a lot going on in outreach and education there. And the Lyme Disease Task Force will set the agenda for the county as far as, so I can't speak for it yet, as far as outreach and education, the medical community. You are correct, there is some controversy regarding Lyme and chronic Lyme. Those issues get worked out as far as when, what type of outreach we give to the doctors and nurses and caregivers on Cape Cod. There's also, as you may know, two people from the Cape have been pointed to a state task force, that being Dr. Danta from Falmouth who is on our Lyme Disease Task Force, and Brenda Bollin, who is the Chair of the task force. So that's how we address the Lyme. Rabies, you also have a rabies task force, which is from our staff, Lee Manillo is the staff person on that, who co-chairs it with a gentleman from the Army. And the outreach there, of course, is educational as well as they sort of oversee and look at the baiting program that is going on in the Cape. And we provide, if a local Board of Health doesn't, immediate response if anybody on the Cape thinks that they have been exposed by having a bat in their house, by being bitten, of course, by an animal they suspect is rabid, anything like that, a call to the local Board of Health puts them in touch with the state epidemiologist 24/7. I don't think I've ever called that state and haven't got a response immediately as far as advice and what to do. And they have a set of protocols, which I suspect change depending on the information that comes into them. They tell us what that protocol is, we call a person or get them in touch with them directly. There is a lot of prophylaxis that occurs on the Cape when people get in touch with bats. You know, we've seen people who say, well, you know, I have fun with that in my kid's room overnight, it's just up in the corner, no big deal. Well, there is a protocol for that, and it doesn't involve doing nothing. Call a state epidemiologist, you relay that information, and they suggest prophylaxis or not depending on what their protocol says. So it is unfortunate that case, in fact, it's the first case in how many years, 70-plus years, and it's a horrific thing to get. So doctors and the state epidemiologists tend to be very conservative on what they say as far as if they believe there's been any exposure. So that was the rabies. The item here that you're referring to primarily is focused on fire, police, and other people, frontline people who need the vaccination for Hep A or for TB or any of the other diseases that they are at risk during their duties of coming into contact with. We've always maintained a readiness and ability to send a public health nurse during their shift and give them the shots. And in some instances, for instance, as I said, with the fire, we've polled them to see, do you want some screenings for things like bladder cancer for firefighters? And we were one of the first series of towns that said, you know, we can offer this test, it's a very quick test, and who knows, it might save a life here. So that's what that particular item refers to.
If I could just follow up on the Lyme Task Force, we had a conference call, Brenda, myself, and Seth Rollbine from Senator Dan Wolf's office with the Secretary of the Department of Health, Arboc's office. And we were talking, it was right before their appointment, so there was a concern where they, Brenda was just concerned that at least one of them got on there, particularly Dr. Danta, and it was wonderful that they both were appointed. And it really, because of lack of funding. I mean, and I will say that my concern was, do they understand what we've been, what we've done here on the Cape in the Department of Public Health? And it seems very much that, if not the Secretary, his immediate staff does, they are aware, and they will be looking to the Cape for not only advice and input on that commission, but I think that's gonna be the vehicle where, because there are less resources, where can we partner and where can we expand those resources, as you all know, on doing different programs together? Because that's gonna really be the way of getting grants when you're partnering and reaching out to other entities. So I think that that's gonna all be much more clear after the first of the year and this commission gets underway. So I think that there'll be a lot more information there, but it's very good that we're there, and they are looking at the Cape as kind of the lead in the, particularly the Lyme disease portion of it.
The challenge is gonna be money because the State Committee has really no funds. So it will be up to really the lead folks in the state, which has been the Cape, to start to say, this is where we think funds should best be expended, because this is a debilitating disease that's totally preventative. And when you have those two in the same sentence, then it offers an opportunity for those who've been doing a lot in it to make some clear suggestions as to where to put your resources. And I'm hoping with Dr. Danta, in particular with Brenda, to be able to make some advice in that area.
On the next page, I'm just wondering on the septic program, betterment program, as we go forward, one of the concerns that you've expressed is you repair your septic system and then there's something coming down the street with regard to, let's say, a regional improvement. There's some concern that people have about what protection would they have going forward, but the real question is, are we providing any direction to the towns with regard to them identifying areas that are eligible for clustering in terms of identifying, let's say, pockets of septic failure because of overall groundwater problems? And I'm just wondering if that's something that would fall, in your opinion, under one of the tasks that would be part of maintaining a septic betterment program? Rather than looking at a response to an individual homeowner's need, just whether or not the towns could, we could invite the communities to have a more active role in identifying those areas so we can move forward, what I'd call cluster? Because I think the loans are available for cluster as well as.
Absolutely.
As well as individuals. But wondering, how do we, how do we move that process forward? Because we have a macro plan for wastewater management that scares the bejesus out of everybody, but there's also these, let's say, what are called a half a dozen or a dozen, let's say, residential houses that are in small lots that might lend itself to, let's say, to a subregional application of this. And I'm wondering if the septic betterment program couldn't be a way that individual homeowners could get, could get together on doing this? And where do we, where do we find the nexus of leadership to move that part of it forward?
Well, that last question is probably the most critical, is where do you find the nexus of leadership? Because within each community which seeks to determine how it's gonna handle this wastewater, even if you were to identify areas for possible cluster, there are two issues. One, with the cluster sort of strategy fit within their overall wastewater management plan. But the second, more important, more immediate, the one that hits you right out the head as soon as you try to approach it, is, wait a minute, why would I cluster with gel? Mine isn't broken. So getting everybody to the dance at the same time is the most difficult part of it. The easiest scenario, of course, is where you have a complex which all tie into one system already, or even if they tie into two or three and those are all identified as, hey, you're gonna be looking at a repair, here's an opportunity for savings in the long term. So if the septic government program, which is a very focused activity, was to try to integrate with the towns on their wastewater management plan, I would suggest it has to take a different face and needs a different level of expertise on staff to be able to do that. And it's not beyond what it could do. However, where we're at now is, as soon as we get an application, there is a sort of a protocol where we say, what area of town, have you checked with your town to see whether you are in an area where it is imminent that you will have sewer, because you may not want to do this. And we've always extended the expertise to any town that wanted it and to any individual that wanted it to design, and I put that in quotes because it's not a true design, something that would get them by, a strategy to get them by if they're only two years away from sewer. And those are fairly easy. To design a septic system in the last five years is a piece of cake. It's like following up a log, get rid of it. But, and we've offered that service, we did that in Princeton, we've done it in Chad or we've done it in Barnstable and some areas. So our present mode of operation is to ask the person to make sure that they're not going to be tapped up against this. Sometimes they know they are and they say, I don't care, two years from now, and I want this thing done now, and we're just gonna do it. Well, you know, at least they've gone in with their eyes wide open. So in answer to your question, presently, that's our level of operation or interaction with the locals. We might make a call to the Board of Health to verify it, particularly at Barnstable, we've done that in Chad. But as far as any other sort of incorporation to the overall wastewater management plan, we've stayed out of it for the long.
And that's where I do think that there should be a collaboration with the wastewater cooperative, the collaborative there and with the commission. Because when you're looking at the finances of how this is all going to roll out, how is, if there's going to be a regional plan, and we talked about this with the commission last meeting when he was before us, and how are we going to, you know, maybe be more aggressive? There is a regional plan, but there has to be some more tweaking to that. And that's where I think that the departments need to have that communication so that one isn't off doing this and the other, you know, this is where we have to have a look at, is there a strategy of an overall regional approach? And that we're not.
Working across.
We're not working across purposes and individual purposes. So I think that that's where there should be more facilitation of conversation when those opportunities come up, that there has to, there has to be more discussion within departments.
I guess the, to piggyback on that, I guess the question becomes, how can we, as county commissioners, help to facilitate that conversation? Because I wouldn't put it directly on your shoulders to say, okay, you've gotta go over to the Cape Cod Commission and get them to cooperate. Okay, I think you have to communicate to us how we can integrate an existing program that will finance, let's say, finance a solution to this. Because the Yarmouth Town Meeting was a watershed event for me that said that although we have done a lot to communicate and get the cooperation and support of what I'd call the management of the community, we have not won the battle of hearts and minds at the application level. And this is, you know, this is part of a, this could suggest a program that could take small bites of attacking a problem, solve the problem, and still stay within what I'd call the reasonable ability of people to, let's say, to afford, to solve a problem that has a longer-term, let's say, life than solving it individually. But anyway, that's.
Well, we'd be certainly open to a procedure and/or a structure to make sure we don't work to cross purposes. Keeping in mind, I hope, that when a system fails, it's imminent.
Absolutely.
It's like tomorrow, it's like the next day, it's like two weeks ago, please. So we've always prided ourselves on being able to prove alone within a day and sort of shepherd the process to the most economical unless the person says, no, I have so-and-so and I don't care how much it costs. That's kinda rare, but it happens. But that's what any process needs to really keep right up in the forefront, that it's flush or no flush is critical to a lot of people.
Right.
And most of the individuals come to us are in situations in which there is less credit available to them than on the common Joe, and that's why they're there, because we don't care about their credit. We need to get the thing fixed and our repayment is somewhat assured by the structure that's set up in place. So whatever structure, whatever procedure, whatever protocol develops has to incorporate some sort of recognition of it immediately.
On the same page.
At least a bandage.
Yeah, we have. We haven't touched personnel yet either. I know.
Okay, well.
So why don't we do personnel, your last case was in the from bats for this? In case anybody has any questions about any of the, I shouldn't say personnel, I mean, kind of line items now, I was just looking at them.
Well, the first thing that strikes you is that there's a lot of blanks in here because we don't have numbers, you know, to suggest what, you know, what the difference is between what has been appropriated for the current fiscal year and what you're.
Because I have to fill in the salary numbers.
Right.
And we don't have the group insurance numbers yet. We'll get those this morning. Because the Cape underscore Health Group hasn't set that rate yet. So I won't be able to tell you exactly what those numbers will be until the end of this one.
And so I guess, or you just answered the question that I got, personnel?
Well, I had a question about if you could maybe kind of give us an update on the Orleans service that we provide them, or do we still do that?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. And because they don't have a sanitarium or.
Well, they have, they have sanitariums, they just needed some additional staff time. In fact, Roughread is now looking at us now to develop a proposal for them for a staff position to help them with Health Department because Andrew's left, so they're down one staff person. That person was primarily. That person was primarily conservation but also health, so it may not fit in with what the expertise of our staff is because conservation is one you really want to have some local knowledge of. But I'll work the proposal up for them. And the Orleans contract is a person in their office, from our office, two days a week. So, of course, their salary is paid for two days a week minus a subsidy which we render to the town based on sort of the normal service we would give them anyhow. So, they shouldn't have to pay the whole freight. There should be some reduction. I believe it results in about a 11% subsidy.
And that's still ongoing?
Yeah, there is continuing and it's ongoing. And we always, recently, down Cape, Wealth Fleet, Truro, Province Town, Province Town lost an agent, and Wealth Fleet has lost an assistant agent, and Truro presently uses contract services for certain things. I approached all those three towns to think, to ask whether they would like us to do a regional sort of proposal for them, for those three towns to have a staff person. And Province Town just hired another person, so they said no. Truro said they're happy with contractual services for Title V, so no there. Wealth Fleet came back and said, give us a proposal. So, we will do that. And we would not use extra staff for that. Because it's two days and we believe we could fit that, because those duties would be, might ease the salary run out a little bit.
Those are the, that's the only comment I have, I have no other comments. Did you have any other comments on that?
I've done on that, but I had some other, I had some other questions.
Well, you have time for one at least.
I just would say, Bill, in terms of your question in terms of salaries, George hasn't proposed any new salary positions or anything. So, the really change in the numbers would be any normal step increases that occurred over the course of the year. And frankly, not just in George's office, but almost across the board of the county, many people, I would say probably close to 60 or 70% are already at their maximum step. So, really just then becomes whatever quota that we issued for last year, which is 50%. So, a lot of the salary numbers won't change by more than 2% to 4%.
You've actually answered quite a few of the questions in the interview, but on individual air quality, I know that you get, you know, sort of a panic kind of a call and the mold is prevalent on Cape Cod quite a bit. I'm wondering if we maintain, let's say, an inventory of suggestions for people that they could access with regard to testing for the, you know, presence of mold spores, you know, within, especially with a lot of the cottages that have all these, you know, the homicidal that's in there, which is sort of a nest place for mold spores.
We actually provide the service. We actually look for mold within, Marina Brack from our staff handles a number of individual complaints, keeps it out the local board of health because they don't have the equipment. But she actually takes the samples, does some indoor fine samples, does carbon dioxide. Usually that's in relation to schools or municipal buildings where there are complaints. But she actually scrapes and checks the mold and advises people as appropriate strategies to minimize mold or in some instances, get rid of it. And many times we've had people think that they have mold and it's, it could be a stain from tannins or something, or the lumber they used yesterday. I was just talking to, there was a guy who did a bunch of roofing, he called, very high-end artist, said, I got this mold. And when the lumber was out in the yard, somebody obviously walked on it because you could see the dog prints, you could see the person prints, and left dirt on it, which of course was, had a nice garden growing out. And they thought it was simply, yeah, scrape it off, if you want to get rid of it, bleach it a little bit. You know, so this, she does the one-on-one with citizens, but she's worked a lot with municipalities, particularly schools, because they're notorious for indoor air quality problems which need resolution, usually it's ventilation and maintenance of ventilation.
Is that a service that there is a fee associated with? You can just go out there and...
We do not charge a fee for that. That's citizen calls, we respond.
Okay. One last question. We maintain a test center outside of the base for alternate systems. And I'd like to find out if you've ever, if you have found to date a system that has been delivered to you for examination that actually lives up to the manufacturer's claims with regard to its effectiveness?
Yeah, there are a few. And we, of course, make that known as much as we can. The majority of them claim to remove now, claim. When they first started, 10 years ago, they were claiming everything. But they claim about 50% remove alone. A lot of them do that. There are some that are claiming more and very exciting things happening lately because, of course, the Cape saying you got to get Boral 5 in a lot of areas have spurred a lot of research and development among existing systems and they're undergoing testing at our facility. And there's some very promising results there. You can't discuss some of them because they're under national sanitation foundation protocols and we are in the contract to discuss that until I issue a report. But there are some local companies, some in Massachusetts, that are doing research there. They believe they're closing in on that number and I'm excited to see it. I'm excited to be in a facility that allows the research to get.
It would all be.
And I have one final comment to make.
Okay.
My comment is that I believe that we are very fortunate to have you as department head over there.
Thank you.
And we're also very fortunate, in my opinion, that we have the kind of staff that comes to work every day with a passion for what they do. I've had the privilege of interviewing several of them over time. And I've always been struck by the fact that we have people that like to do what they do, know what they're doing, and have an enthusiasm for their work.
Well, thank you.
So, I think we're blessed for having that and I wanted to, want to make sure that we communicated our appreciation.
Bring that back.
Right. And I always enjoy the meetings with you because they're educational, because we come away learning really important things from discussing your budget. So, it's been very informative.
Hang around for Jones.
Yeah, you're just here.
Is he here?
He's just here.
Thank you very much.
Just take a five minute break.
Thank you, George. Yeah, we'll take a five minute break. George, that's your father.